Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I'd like to call the September 8th meeting of the Town Council to order. We could please take a moment of silence to acknowledge all of those that do and have served, enabling each and every one of us safety, freedom, and privilege to vote. Thank you. In accordance with Mass. General Law, this meeting is being audio and video recorded. I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording, and if so, could you please identify yourself? Jamie, do you see anyone?
Just us.
Okay, that's good. So, this meeting is being held virtually through a Zoom webinar, Pursuit to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. I guess we can move right into public comments. Anyone with public comments? Hearing and seeing none. Council comments?
Mike, I've got, it's more of a question. Typically, in July, we do appointments to all of our standing committees, and the President either reappoints us or asks, who wants to be on what board? I know with COVID, I know with meeting remotely and all, that everything's been up in the air, but I just want to bring it to the forefront, as far as maybe at a future meeting, we can just go through and make sure the appointments are standing and that we're good with everything.
Thank you. I have had a conversation with Jeannie over the last couple of weeks. She did provide me with a list that was requested by other standing committees, and we're about to make certain amendments to that list, so that we can, hopefully, bring us, at our next council meeting, a date that is up to date. So, if there are no other council comments, I believe Mary has a somewhat lengthy town manager's report for us.
Thank you, Mike. Mike has given me the luxury of not having to prepare a written report for each meeting, which I truly and sincerely appreciate, but since we were a few weeks without much communication, I decided that when, as I was making my notes, I'd put them in writing and send them to you anyway. So, we have a report. And I don't want to belabor what's in it, because I'm sure you can all read it, but there are a couple of highlights, more than a couple, actually, that have happened recently. The first of which is the award. I don't know how scientific the polling is, but East Long Meadow was once again voted the best community to live in by the Reader Raves polling out of the Republican newspaper. So, we consider that quite an honor, and in order to share the glory with the people who are really responsible for that, I invited all our town department heads, town staff, as well as the members of the council, to come for the photo session that was arranged by the Republican. So, it was a very quick event. No speeches, no ice cream, no cake, but just some good feelings, and I would say there were maybe thirty, thirty-five people that were present that morning. In the line of community opportunity and having East Long Meadow be such a good place to live, I do want to make a somewhat impassioned plea to our public, our listening public and watching public, to check out our website and determine if you think you have the time or the appetite to offer your services to one of our vacant board and/or commission seats. Community participation in those, on those boards and commissions is vitally important and desperately needed, as there are several committees that have vacancies that have been upstanding for some period of months. In addition, on the town website newsflash page, Bethany Yao from our planning department had posted the, a master plan survey, which is intended to solicit opinions from the community on primarily housing needs, but in the larger picture, our efforts to solicit the town's opinions on what is important to certain aspects of the community, what type of housing you want, how you feel about open space, and things of that nature. I took the survey myself, and it only takes about five, six minutes to answer. Again, that's not going to be scientific by any means, but I would truly hope and ask that people would take the time to examine that survey and offer us the benefit of your insight, so that when we do formalize the master plan, which is long in the making, we would have the benefit of your input. Steve Lonergan's with us tonight, and I don't want to steal all of, or any of his thunder, really, but I do want to make the council and the community aware that the Finance Office is in the process of closing out Fiscal 20, and Steve has a preliminary report with some data in it that he can offer for your consideration tonight. The main achievement, if I, I guess I'll call it that, is that due to the cost-cutting measures that all the town departments implemented this past spring with the onset of COVID, the turnbacks to the Town General Fund amount to over a million and a half dollars in, for fiscal year 20, which I think is a real testament to the sacrifice that all of us made in order to save money, because we didn't know where the budget was going, and we still don't, in terms of the Commonwealth's budget and our town revenue. So, I'm quite proud of that fact, and I'm very proud of the effort that the department heads and the employees of the town offered to get us to this point. We have several other very serious issues in our financial business that I will let Steve elaborate on, either tonight or at some other time, but we're focused on getting the Fiscal 20 audit done, which we believe will start in mid-September. The Fiscal 19 audit was delayed for reasons certainly beyond Steve's control and mine. However, the audit is now completed for Fiscal 19, and we're moving forward with some significant financial endeavors that were postponed because of the lack of a Fiscal 19 audit. There was no bonding done for Fiscal 20 projects because our financial services company requires the audit to be completed when they do the vetting process for our bond applications, and since that wasn't done, we couldn't bond, and hence, we're somewhat behind in where we'd like to be in our progression of capital projects and overall fiscal health. And I'll let Steve talk about capital projects, if you want to talk about it, but he's done a terrific job in two months only to sort of organize us and set us on a, set an outline and a path for, I'll call it recovery, even though it's, it's not that bad, but a path to organize their tasks and our planning and get our financial house in order. And I don't mean that in any sense of fiscal irresponsibility or, or, or lack of funds. We, we're, we're in pretty good shape right now in terms of revenue, but I just mean in the overall organization of the department. But I will continue to ask for your indulgence, because that department continues to be short-staffed, and a vacancy continues to exist. A grievance has been filed regarding that vacancy, and the outcome of that is going to delay further a filling of that position, depending on how far that grievance goes. So, finance is still flying, as I like to say, on one wing, and Steve and Olga are working very hard together to make everything come together on a, in a timely basis. HR continues to do its thing, posting job vacancies. The advertising for our Council on Aging Director is underway. We're conducting now exit interviews when people do leave the town's employ, and we're formatting a handbook for employee policies and guidance that is overdue, I think. The Recreation Department, together with Elcat and the Council on Aging, collaborated last week on a very special event that took place outside the high school superintendent's office in the, just beyond the parking lot. The event, as I described in my memo, was called an intergenerational program, and it brought several different age groups together for just a casual conversation that took, that lasted, actually, over two hours. Elcat filmed it. Recreation was there, as was the COA guiding the discussion, and there were people from their nineties, their eighties, their sixties, twenties. I think there were maybe two or three in their forties, and then a couple of kids from the Pine Knoll Swim School who came. So, they were our under-ten representatives, and they all conversed with each other, and, and I thought the event was very successful, and I know they're planning on doing it again. We've also begun, Don Mackey and Ryan Quimby and I have begun the conversation with Spectrum about the renewal of the cable license. We've received a template from the Specter, Spectrum, rather, which we have yet to analyze and look through. It raises the concept of whether or not we should investigate a broadband service that's owned by the municipality, and Don Mackey has forwarded me some significant information about that topic. Ryan has mentioned it a few times, so it's a, it's a thought that I want to pursue with them, and then ultimately make a presentation to the council at some point in the, hopefully, not too distant future. Several other departments and I met with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Representative John Leary to discuss the Community Block, Community Development Block grant that is going to expire in December of this year. It was an $800,000 grant that I explained in my memo was used for four different purposes. Key among them were the redevelopment, rehabilitation of 12 homes of families who live in East Long Meadow, who are low to moderate income, and were able to apply for funds under these, this grant program to rehabilitate their properties. Additionally, $180,000 went to re-roof the inward commons project up off of Summers Road. That project is now completed, and the other major contribution from this grant was the mobile food pantry minivan, which I don't know if any of you have seen it twirling around town, but it's wrapped by Grow Graphics with some logos and some, a woman with packages of food in either arm, made a big impression, and it serviced our elder community and the disadvantaged in East Long Meadow considerably throughout this pandemic. And there's a little bit of money left that was of the $800,000 that was used to do some of the early specifications and architectural studies about whether or not a, an elevator could be installed in the town hall. There was about $50,000 that went to that purpose, and so that project is still, it's sort of suspended between floors. It's not, it's not anywhere near complete, and we have to give that a lot more thought. I enclosed a legal update in the, my report, and I initially had asked for executive session, but the more I thought about it, we're not discussing any strategy here, so I just wanted to give you an update of where we, where the town stands on a couple of these litigation cases. There are two that are being defended by private counsel, which are the Peace Road Solar Farm issue and the Pride Convenience Stores issues on closing times, appealing decisions of the planning board denying their requests for extended closing times. Recently, in the Pride case, the parties, meaning East Long Meadow and Pride, entered a stipulation that one of the two cases that were pending in parallel courts would be dismissed, so that both parties could save money. Both, the one issue, one case was in Land Court, the other was in the Superior Court. The Superior Court case has been dismissed by agreement. The Land Court case, whatever that ruling turns out to be, in the absence of an agreement between the parties, will control both cases. So, there was no point, really, in pursuing and spending legal fees to defend both. And on the solar case, the summary judgment motion that Attorney Pill filed, seeking reconsideration of the decision that went against the town last summer, is still under advisement by the Land Court Judge. The petitioner has filed an appeal based on the planning board's denial of his site plan review. The appeal is really just based on the fact that no reasons or rationale for that decision was articulated within the decision itself, and it should have been. So, he's appealed to the Land Court, and the Land Court has remanded the case to the parties, to the planning board, and so they will be holding a public hearing. I believe it's scheduled for either September 22nd or the 29th. I'm not certain at this moment. The other three cases are being defended by our insurer through the Mass. Municipal Association, our insurance carrier, and there is a $5,000 deductible on each of those cases, but we don't receive ongoing legal bills for them. So, I'm assuming, since they all were undertaken before I got here, that the deductibles have been paid, if reached, and on one case, which dealt with a falling tree onto someone's property, I'd be surprised if we've reached a $5,000 expense on that, but those three cases were pending in the Mass Commission against Discrimination. One dealt with an age discrimination complaint filed against the town due to lack of an appointment of a woman to a position that she had applied for, and another one was also a discrimination complaint for failure to honor someone's claim for family medical leave benefits. So, those are all pending, and I do receive an update from council every six or eight months, or whenever I think to ask for it. So, the last update was that nothing has happened since last November on any of these cases. So, we did get some very good news just before the meeting started. I referenced in my report that the DPW had been, working on a number of grant applications, one of which was a Shared Streets grant that was authored by Bruce Fenny and Bethany Yao. And just tonight, I got an email from Bruce indicating that the town had been awarded a grant of $117,000 of a $133,000 application. So, kudos to Bruce and Bethany. This particular grant is to build space for open dining, and you might think that we're at the tail end of that season, but the work has to be done by October 13th, under terms of the grant, and it will be behind Leahy Field in the parking lot that services Leahy Field or a certain portion of it, and the intent is to create a path to connect the rail trail to Maple Court in that area, and provide some outdoor seating for town residents, as long as the weather cooperates. And it'd also be like an additional walking trail and a bike path connector. So, more details on that will follow, but that was very good news. And we're waiting to hear on the Mass Works Grant, which is a very large grant, but one that's been pushed each week at the meetings that I attend with the Lieutenant Governor and the other statewide CEOs. They're encouraging municipalities to apply for these grants, so we did, and that's a grant that would provide a huge infrastructure project on the northern end of town in North Main Street with sewer connections, so that we can better monitor and meter the sewage outflow going into the Springfield Wastewater Commission, and thereby, hopefully, have a better access and better control over the billing to the town of East Long Meadow Homes and Residences and Businesses for that sewage output. And it's just a major, major project. So, we applied for, I think it was $590,000 or something like that, and the town has to match it by putting in $100,000, but it's small money if we can get that grant. Planning Department also had some great success. We've applied for a grant to do our master plan, get some assistance with that. Bethany Yao put that together with the help of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and we have every reason to believe that we will be awarded those funds. We're waiting for a formal announcement from the Governor's Office, but Bethany applied for a grant in the approximate amount of $84,000, and we, as I say, we have strong reason to believe that we are going to be awarded that money. So, I praise her for that as well. I attended the Community Preservation Commission meeting the other night, where there was talk about some projects at Pine Knoll for a playscape, considerable money, $180,000, I think, was the amount of the application. And the only reason I, and also some small money for a dog park at Heritage. But in the context of a master plan, I urged the committee chair to consider hitting the pause button on some of these major projects, just so that we can determine how or if they figure and they intertwine with what we hope will be a master plan that'll be ready there. Open space aspects are underway through the Recreation Department and the Assessor's Office, so we're making progress on resolving the remaining questions on the open space in this housing survey that I referenced earlier in my report. Will help Bethany and her committee pull the strings together, hopefully, to get a draft master plan for us in the very near future. Police and Fire were also awarded some grants recently from the Executive Office of Public Safety. Fire Department received 23, almost 24,000, and the police, almost, a little over 4,000, and this is to fund additional personal protection equipment and compensate the town for overtime spending for those departments. So, Paul Morissette and Jeff DeLassio were right on top of the necessity to get these grant applications in there and signed and processed and so forth, and we received that notification last week that those, those grants were also awarded. I know it's near the bottom of the report, Jeannie, but there is a little reference to the Clerk's Office and the wonderful job that Jeannie and her staff did accommodating the early voting, the absentee ballots. I mean, if you, if any of you have the opportunity to be in the Clerk's Office, you can see the volume of paperwork that has, that has been processed by a very limited staff. They've worked weekends consistently for the last month or so, and I'll let Jeannie elaborate on the actual processing through Election Day itself, but again, very proud of her too, and the efforts that her department made to, to make this procedure go smoothly. We do have, I did authorize Ryan Quimby to purchase a second Zoom license for us. Don Mackey has created a master meeting calendar, which I've shared with the department heads today in an effort to ease the scheduling crunch for all these Zoom meetings. And last but not least, I have made a series of appointments to boards and commissions that are detailed on the third page of my report. The ones that, on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I've asked Mark Begley and Charles Gray to continue to serve. On the Recreation Commission, there are new appointees, Nancy Roberts and Carol Ann Elmandorf, and on the Cultural Council, Anne Paquette, Patricia Dupere, and Torsia. But of note, particularly to the council, I've also asked Dr. Sarah Perez-McAdoo to continue on the Board of Health, Philip Abir and Bill Jalinas to continue their service on the Board of Public Works. And that is my report for tonight. So, thank you for your indulgence, listening to me rattle on for so long. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions at this point in time?
Mike, I have a quick question for Mary. Mary, about a year ago, the council had approved funding for engineer work at Heritage Park through the CPC. I was just wondering if that's gone out to bid, if you know of anything being done with that or not yet?
I'm, I'm familiar with it, a very superficial familiarity with it, Counselor Page, and it has not gone out to bid, to my knowledge. At least, I haven't signed off on anything. I think that whole project is still sort of in the pause stage. There was some discussion, I think, at a CPC meeting, but it was several months ago. I think COVID has kind of put the brakes on that. And maybe Marilyn knows, I can see her raising her hand, but that's all I know, but I'll be happy to check into it for you.
Thank you.
If I may, okay, if I may, I attended the CPC meeting that was last, the earlier, the last week, I guess, and this discussion came up because they are looking for $180,000 for a playground at Pine Knoll, and we've already promised $115,000 or so thousand dollars for the architectural study, and so I'm, you know, we're like promising all this money that's not being utilized. So, the response was quite simply that they, it's on hold. So, they're not, so they haven't spent any money, it's not gone out for bid. Vote of the council is still current, and I don't know how long that lasts. However, that did give some pause to, you know, we're waiting for the 115, and now you want another $180,000. So, there's a lot of interest to spend a lot of recreational money, but nothing's being spent. That's it.
Chairman Kane, could I just add one more comment?
Absolutely.
That project, again, preceded my employment with the town, and one of my concerns that I expressed at the meeting of the CPC was that, I think, as the town manager, I need to have better understanding and more information provided to me about potential uses of town property and the purposes for which, and that's why I mentioned the master plan, because in and of themselves, all these projects are great, but my thought is, I don't know that we want to go spend $300,000 in one section of town and 200 somewhere else on similar projects without a master plan, because I think that the integration of all these great ideas is kind of key to making a successful master plan and kind of having it be coherent and comprehensive. I don't, I mean, I certainly don't intend to interfere with any decisions that were made before my tenure. That, that's not my point at all, but I just felt that I needed to express the fact that I didn't really know anything about the detail of these projects, and so to the extent that they use town property, you know, for purposes that would be somewhat permanent, I guess I'd like to know that before we put a shovel in the ground.
Sounds good. Don?
Also, it just ties in for your email earlier today, Mary, on the broadband services. I think that's a great idea. I brought it up back in, when I first got elected in 2016, and I think now we're even more mindful of the need to at least explore that with people working from home, people, kids being educated from home, businesses and so forth, dependent on remote employees working and so forth, and I think it's just going to be, put East Long Meadow in the forefront, if there's a way we can find a feasibility to pull this off and to have it in our town. So, I would, depending on the time of day of this committee meeting, I'd be happy to serve.
Great. Thank you, Don, and I owe that impetus to Don Mackey, because he's, he's been nudging me, and I finally got a chance to respond to his suggestions. So, thank you for continuing to be interested in that.
Thank you.
It's a big opportunity for East Long Meadow, and I think it's one we may want to seriously think about capitalizing on.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike. I wanted to echo Mary's comments about the master plan questionnaire. I took the questionnaire, and I wasn't excited to take it, because I wasn't sure what it was going to be like. I thought it was very well done. It didn't take very long at all to fill out. It asked for all kinds of different issues, different opinions, and I, I can't say too much good about it. Everybody should fill it out.
Great. I would, I would just have one question, and it seems that now's a good time, while we have Steve in the audience here. Coming off of budget finance and speaking to council members, members of that committee and a few residents, the subject of, of our capital came up, and just so that I may- And just so that I make sure I understand this right, and I believe this information will be good for everyone as well, is that the OPEC analysis was not completed prior to trying to put capital together. So as I understand it, without the OPEC analysis being completed, that would prevent us from our audit being completed for fiscal nineteen, which this keeps running downhill, which would prevent us from bonding. And that would have a direct correlation regarding capital. Is that phrased properly?
Pretty much, because the OPEB study wasn't completed, they didn't complete our audit. It was an important part of our audit for FY nineteen. That's why the audit was completed so late. Just so everybody, to put a little bit more comfort on it, the data used in that from last year can also be used for this year. And we are already pulling together the other questions they have, so it'll be done before the audit even starts this year. So there should be no delay in the audit for FY twenty. And going forward, it's part of a timeline that I'm creating that will say, at this point, we need to submit this and that and the other thing. It's important to kind of realize too, this year's just been kind of crazy. And while I don't advocate and certainly hope it'll never happen again, I'd like to, you know, we all kind of went haywire this year with deadlines and timelines and everything else. But the, it did roll downhill. We could not bond in twenty for the projects we had because the audit wasn't completed. They will not even entertain talking to us until after, until the audit's completed.
Okay, I think now everybody knows why. There's many moving parts to this. And before we get to capital, these other steps obviously need to be completed. So I understand you coming into this position with not only trying to move forward, but correct, you know, mishaps from the past. So thank you for myself and this council for everything you've done and the team that's behind you to help get us updated and move us into this next session. So thanks, Steve. Any other questions? Seeing none, I believe everybody's had the opportunity to look at the July twenty-eighth open session minutes of the town council. And if you have, and there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Point of order, Michael, is it July twenty-eighth or July twenty-one? The minutes that we received were July twenty-one.
It's July twenty-one. It's just a type one suggested motions.
Okay, all right.
Okay, okay. So under approval of the minutes, it should read approval of July twenty-one, correct?
That's correct. So I would move that we approve the open session minutes of July twenty-first, 2020.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made in second. And any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote required. Kathy Hill?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Ralph Page?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tom? I believe I heard a yes from Tom.
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you.
Good job, Jackie.
Yeah, that was a tricky one.
Yeah, that was a lot of pages.
Okay, under communications, correspondence, and announcements, I'd be looking for a report from Jeanne based on the state primary election.
Okay, so this election started with the state sending to every registered voter a postcard application to send back to their clerk's offices to vote by mail. So those came pouring into our office by late July by the binfuls. And each of those applications had to be entered into the state system as to the date that we received them, then the date we sent out the ballots. That just started, started the whirlwind. We then, as Mary said, we worked every weekend to try to keep up with those, so we're not behind. Then we rolled into early voting, since August twenty-second to the twenty-eighth. We had, that's early in-person voting, I should say, because now we have all these different terms that we need to learn besides absentee and early mail-in and early in-person. We had three hundred and eighty turnout for seven days of early voting, which isn't great. I'm sure it's going to be more for the presidential. The presidential early voting starts October seventeen through October thirtieth, including two weekends. So we'll be very busy at that time, too. As far as Election Day, we did the same COVID requirements we did for the June election. I had called Amy Petraske, our health director, and Paul Morrissey, our emergency management director, as well as fire chief, just to make sure that we were still up to date with all the requirements. And so we had, this year we bought, this election we bought pens to give out to voters. So we weren't sanitizing a continuous revolving reservoir of pens. And that worked out pretty well. We might do a hybrid of that in November. Still planning for November and how we're going to handle that. The day was steady. Usually you get people flooding in at seven o'clock and maybe lunchtime and supper time. But people are working from home. They have a more flexible schedule to come in. So it was pretty steady all day long. We had received over three thousand ballots, either from early in-person voting or absentee voting or mail-in voting. And we had a crew of volunteers continuously opening up those ballots and checking them and casting them in, just as you would if you were walking in to vote. Pat and his wife were there for a little while, helping out. I appreciated that. And they were just nonstop, because you're not allowed to open the ballots or cast them until the day of the election. So that was, that was right up to eight o'clock. There was, I have a report here, and the actual hourly voter count cumulative was four thousand three hundred and eighty. But if you look at the report that I gave you, the grand total was four thousand four hundred and six. And that small difference is because the hourly count was taken by hand, walking around to the voting machines just as the polls closed. But we also had to check our drop box at eight o'clock that night. And Mary O'Connor brought the ballots over to us, and we still had to feed those in and get those all ready before we closed down the voting machines. So it was a thirty-five, eight point eight percent turnout. A little over sixty-five percent were the early ballots that we received. I think it was a good turnout. The three big races, I can read to you here, Markey for Democratic Party, Senator in Congress, Markey was over Kennedy. Markey, one thousand five hundred and seventy-one votes to Kennedy's one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven votes. Whoop, I'm sorry, Kennedy. Okay, sorry about that. And then Richard Neal, two thousand three hundred and fifty-five votes over Alex Mars's one thousand one hundred votes. And then the Republican Party, Kevin O'Connor, five hundred and ten votes over Dr. Sheva, three hundred and eighty-three. So we expect a bigger turnout in November. We're already gearing up for it. We're trying to take a little break and catch up on all of our clerk work that we had to set aside for these priorities for the election. But overall, I think it went pretty well.
I think it went very well, and yourself and staff did a great job for it and it'll certainly prep you for November.
For the big one. Yep, it will. Thank you.
Okay. Under seven B, resolution in support of the Soldiers' Home in Holyoke. Mary, could you help us with that?
Sure. I received an email from Anne Haskell, who I believe is in the audience tonight and hopefully will be speaking to this resolution, asking me to have East Long Meadow support this resolution for, to urging the governor to spend some money to rehabilitate and improve the setting at the Holyoke Soldiers' Home. She was referred to me by John Commerford, our Veteran Services Officer. I hemmed and hawed because, you know, once again, and under the charter, I wasn't sure if this was my call or the council's call. And so anyway, it's your call. I think that's how I interpret what I read in the charter, since it's a more or less a policy or a resolution of, anyway. So that's why it's on your agenda. And the resolution itself, I believe, was in your packet forwarded to you by the town clerk, together with the emails from Mrs. Haskell. And if Jamie or Don, if it's okay with you, Chair, to bring them into the meeting. I think Anne would like to address this issue with some particularity. And I don't know, hi Anne, I don't know if your coordinator is with you. You had suggested that you might ask her to join as well.
Yes, I do. Can I speak now?
Sure, go right ahead.
So hello, everyone. Officially welcome to our wonderful town, Mary.
Thank you.
Resident here for a lot of years. I'm the nurse at Birchland Park. I've been since, thank you, Kathy Hill, back to her time at Birchland Park. So when I joined this coalition for the Holyoke Soldiers' Home, I, you know, we talked about all the towns that were part of our coalition. I live in East Long Meadow, and I thought, why isn't East Long Meadow part of the coalition? So that's why I brought it to our community, just to ask if you would be willing to support it. The reason my husband and I joined the coalition, I know, I'm sure all of you saw this on the news. What happened at the Soldiers' Home was like unspeakable. My uncle Tony King was one of the unfortunate veterans in the seventy-sixth plus that died COVID-nineteen positive at the Soldiers' Home, really from like March to May. And it was a horrendous experience. I never went through anything like it. You know, being a nurse, you know, you want to be with your loved one and take care of them right until the end. And we weren't even allowed in the facility. Like, it was beyond words a nightmare, just awful. So I said, in loving memory and honor of my uncle Tony, my husband and I want to join this coalition to try to improve the Soldiers' Home, so this never happens again. The Soldier's Home is, you know, it's too small of a facility. You know, there's three and four people in one room, you know, with like a curtain in between the bed. They have to go down a hall to share a bathroom and a shower. You know, these residents, these resident veterans, they deserve to be cared for with honor and dignity. And to me, the way the Soldiers' Home is laid out right now, that certainly is not the case. And then when you throw an infection in here like this COVID-nineteen that was so highly contagious, it went right through this whole facility. And it's an awful thing, you know, not just for the residents, but for the family members that had to deal with it. So along with me right now and should be on this Zoom meeting is Paul Baraboni. He's a former superintendent of the Soldiers' Home, and he's part of the coalition. We have many people, you know, family members, and we have senators and representatives, Representative, you know, Neal and Bellis, I could list so many, that support what we're trying to do. We want to renovate the existing building and then put an addition onto the side to open it up. We have so many veterans in our community that have, they're on a waitlist for months and months at a time. You know, we need an Adult Day health program. The need for that is very, very high. You know, you put a person in a nursing home, it's at least ten thousand a month. Who can afford that? You know, you watch your savings just like go right down. When my uncle broke his leg, six months he was in a nursing home, sixty thousand dollars, just, you know, right out of his savings. You know, the Soldiers' Home is a place that veterans deserve to go for care, but not the way it is set up, right the way it is right now. So all we're asking is, you know, for the town of East Long Meadow, just to support this resolution, asking, I mean, I spoke myself to Governor Baker. I spoke to Senator John Bellis, you know, telling them what my uncle went through and what the other seventy-five veterans went through. We need to make changes so that it never happens again. When I talked to John Commerford, he said he was all for signing this resolution. But he said, you know, he told me to reach out to you, Mary, and then you, you know, reached out to the town council. I appreciate all of you listening. And if you have any questions, you know, for us, we're not asking for money. We're just asking for your support to say, hey, East Long Meadow, we care about our veterans, and we want to take a stand and make it better for them. So that's what we're asking. And if you have any questions, Paul Baraboni should be on this call with me. Please ask, but we're just hoping for your support, that's all. So thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Don?
Question, Anne. I can't imagine any community not supporting such a worthy cause. Are you so far receiving, you know, unanimous support by all the communities you and others in this organization are reaching out to?
Yes, everyone we've reached out to, I just, September second, I just got Wolverham. Like, I have all of this. I mean, I can just quickly tell you, you know, who joined with us. Granby, Ludlow, Southwick, Granville, Williamsburg, Amherst, Northampton, Chesterfield, Hadley, Covington, Holyoke, Munson, Huntington, Northampton, Worthington, Wolverham, East Hampton, Plainfield. You know, and then there's all organizations along with those towns, you know what I mean? Like the American Legion and the Veterans Council, Western Mass Veterans Outreach, Greater Holyoke Council. There's a lot of other, not just the towns, but a lot of other agencies that are part of this. And then, you know, I also printed, just so you could hear, you know, we have Congressman Neal, Senator Bellis, State Senator Commerford, State Rep Vega, State Rep Sabadosa, State Rep Brian Ash, State Rep Joe Wagner, Springfield City Councilor Adam Gomez. I mean, and anybody that we've brought this to has said, of course, I want to help you. We've not had one person that said no. And I thought, I live in East Long Meadow. I look at this list and I thought, I want East Long Meadow on this list because it's my town. And I want what's best for the veterans. You know, my father's a veteran, my father-in-law's a veteran. I mean, I have so many veterans in my family that I feel like this is my way of thanking them for what they did. You know, my uncle Tony, he wasn't so fortunate with what happened to him. It was an awful death. It was an awful thing to go through. My uncle Tony, I don't know if you, I'll just tell you real quick, back in nineteen thirty-four, he fought against racism. I mean, if you saw what Gary Brown put in the newspaper, he was the last living survivor of that nineteen thirty-four American Legion baseball team that stood up for racism. They lost their shot at the American Legion baseball to go in the major leagues. But their African-American friend on their team wasn't allowed to play down in Gastonia, North Carolina in nineteen thirty-four. So my uncle Tony was a captain of that team, and he said, if he doesn't play, none of us play. So they lost their shot at the major leagues, came back home to Springfield. Now there's a monument at Forest Park in their name. They've written two books from Springfield College. Richard Anderson, the professor at Springfield College, wrote two books about my uncle. You know, they made a movie, a documentary, they put it into the Cooperstown Baseball Hall of Fame, all about my uncle. He was so famous, like Mayor Sarno knows him, he calls me, you know, at home to talk about my uncle Tony. He celebrated his hundred and second birthday party on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, at the Soldiers' Home. He was singing with Cy Becker with a microphone. He was singing "Take Me Out To The Ballgame." You know, January twenty-ninth, did he deserve to get this COVID-nineteen and lose his life in such a horrific way on April ninth? No. And I wasn't ready to lose him, even at a hundred and two years old. He was in perfect condition, perfect. You know, mentally, but COVID-nineteen was powerful. And when you have a facility like the Soldiers' Home where there's three people in a room divided by a curtain with less than a, you know, less than a yardstick between them, what are your chances to fight infection?
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you, Mike. For as long as I've been in Massachusetts, I have heard horror stories about the Soldiers' Home. I've heard people dying to get in there, that expression. And I've heard over and over and over, bad management, never enough funding, never enough funding. And so I would support completely the renovation of this place once and for all because it's been going on a long time.
It has. Thank you. And I will tell you, and this is awful to say, the other facility is in Chelsea. Chelsea, anything on the other side of Worcester seems to get more than we get in Western Mass. They got more than we got for Holyoke. How is that even fair? It's like Holyoke doesn't even exist.
Marilyn?
Agree. For the staffing, you know, for infection control, for the size of the facility, for many reasons, what you just said, Mr. Henry, it is not fair to the residents in Western Mass, and that's who's in Holyoke. Everybody else is out in Chelsea. They didn't have the desks like what we had here, you know?
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you. Marilyn?
Anne, I want to thank you for being the local voice for this endeavor. We lost some neighbors, same situation. So I certainly understand how hard it was for you and your uncle Tony. That being said, it's so simple to sign this piece of paper. What else can we as East Long Meadow do? I mean, are there other initiatives out there or are we just? I mean, I guess when I read this, we have funding, federal funding, but we don't have the state matching. I mean, I guess when I read this, we have funding, federal funding, but we don't have the state matching grant. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. Paul, are you on right now with, can you hear us? Paul Baraboni? He said he was like in the background.
Here he comes, here he comes.
Just unmute.
Absolutely. I'm also listening to the Soldiers Home trustees meeting. Well, thank you for the comments I've heard so far. It was my honor to, to have been superintendent at the home from 2011 to 2016. So what else we can do is a question I've heard, and that's a wonderful question. Again, we're just trying to reach out to all of the officials that can have an influence on the future of the home. Tomorrow, we'll be briefing, I think about eight representatives and senators. We've tried, we've already briefed Senator Bellis and Representative Wagner. So yeah, anybody that you feel can help bring this to fruition would be appreciated. You know, just your personal sign of support as individuals. We do have a website, HoyokeSoldiersHomeCoalition.com, which people can go to and express their personal support for it. But again, anybody within the elected community that we think could have some influence to do what's right, to make this thing right. It was such a tragedy. We have great concerns that the solution may be to reduce the number of available beds to veterans. That's our greatest concern and that's why we have as one of the objectives, a minimum of 250 beds. The plan that we, if you read the resolution, in 2010, the Soldiers Home was cited for non-compliant rooms. I arrived in 2011 and 2012, put together a plan which would build 120 private rooms with their own bathrooms, you know, in the room. And at that time was 116 million dollars. Federal government committed to their 65%. So the state had to come up with $40 million and we would have had 120 new rooms. Plus the existing building would have been retrofitted to another 150 beds. So we would have at that time, 278. Right now, we're looking for 250, because we fear that the, the state will, the solution will be Chester retrofit the existing building and that would cut care to veterans in Western Massachusetts by about in half. And we really don't, don't see where that's an appropriate way to fix a situation of what we've gone through. It literally is adding insult to injury to the veteran community. So the long-term care is one piece of it. The second part, as Anne has explained, was Adult Day Healthcare, which would allow families to be comfortable when they're not home and not able to care for their veteran, that they'd be able to come into a social environment, have nurses and doctors to be able to see them, to ensure that they're taking their meds, that they're in a safe environment, that they're recreating, socializing with other veterans. And then when that time comes, that there would be a smooth transition into the long-term care. Any other pieces, the staffing question, just to ensure that they do have adequate staffing for all the veterans that are there. So any other questions, certainly happy to answer.
Does anyone else have any questions for Paul or Anne at this time? If not, thank you for the great explanation. It was very helpful. I, I think it's pretty evident to see that we are in support of this resolution. And I was going to say, Mary, can you advise us on, on where we go from here with the resolution?
Well, I think it might be better to just take a roll call vote and then we can execute the document. I can communicate with Anne tomorrow about that.
Okay, that, that definitely seems appropriate. So for approval of the resolution, I, I don't know if we need a formal motion. But if everyone's comfortable with that, I would start with a roll call vote with Kathy.
Absolutely, yes.
I am in support of the resolution as well. Ralph?
Yes, I am in support, 100%.
Thank you. Don? Muted.
Infatic, yes.
Thanks. Patrick?
Yes.
Tom?
Absolutely, yes.
And Marilyn?
Absolutely, yes.
So Paul and Anne, I can, obviously you can see this is unanimous. Everybody is very happy to get this done for you and join the coalition. So thank you both for your time and we'll look forward to talking to you down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about your loss.
Anne and Paul, just if you could just keep us in the loop as how things are going. And if there is anything more we can do as a community, please always, you know, open door, feel free to share.
That's so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to each one of you. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Next order of business is a public hearing. And before I open the public hearing, I would just like to advise anyone that would like to speak, we will need your names and addresses and please signify by raising your hand. I would appreciate it if you would address your comments through the chair. Everyone will be, have the opportunity to speak when the time is appropriate. That being said, this public hearing is being continued from August 11th, 2020 to approve a proposed transfer of license, pledge of license and change of location from the Beer Shop located at 33 Harkness Ave. To CPM Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Heritage Plaza Liquors, located at 406 slash 436 North Main Street. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and introduce the council members. Council members, starting from left at the top of my screen are Kathy Hill. I am Michael Kane, Ralph Page, Don Anderson, Pat Henry, Tom O'Connor and Marilyn Richards. Jeannie, could you please read the legal notice into the record?
She's muted.
Sorry about that. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that CPM Liquors Incorporated, DBA Heritage Plaza Liquors, has applied for a transfer of license, pledge of license and change of location from the Beer Shop, 33 Harkness Avenue to CPM Liquors Incorporated, DBA Heritage Plaza Liquors, 406 to 436 North Main Street. This is a correction from a legal notice published on July 23rd, 2020, that listed the address as 466 North Main Street. The town council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 7:00 PM via Zoom webinar. Please see the following link to join the webinar. For the council, Jeanne Quagliti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thanks, Jeannie. Jackie, if you could bring the applicant into the meeting at this point in time, it would be great.
Jamie? What's his name?
I believe, are we, are we looking for the attorney for the applicant or?
Public first?
I believe it's Matthew Porter.
Okay. So we'd like to bring Matthew in to present the proposed actions to the council.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. And Manil Patel, who is the president of CPM Liquors Inc., I believe is, is here as well. I'm not sure if you're able to let him in, in case there's any questions of the applicant.
Yes. Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So just by way of introduction, my name is Matthew Porter and the Liquors Inc. Along with me tonight is Manil Patel. Mr. Patel is the president of CPM Liquors Inc. He is joined by his wife, Roma Patel. Mr. Patel will be the liquor license manager. By office at 480 Turnpike Street, Eastern Mass.
Thank you. If, if that's, if you concluded the presentation at this point, I'd like to invite the public in now for any input that they might have. And as I previously said, speakers must come forward and state their names and addresses and only address the, the chair, please, and be as specific as possible. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak publicly? Jackie?
There's no hands raised. If they do want to speak, they just have to press the raise hand button. But right now I'm seeing none.
Okay, I guess it's fair to say, hearing or seeing none, well, we will close the public input of the meeting. And the council will now have an opportunity to discuss or ask any questions.
If, if I may, sorry, maybe I missed the board. I thought we were just doing introductions. I'm happy to give a little bit more of a background on the transaction, if that suits the council.
I think it would be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure that that's what you were looking for. So again, my name is Matthew Porter. This, before the board, is a transfer of the Section 15 All Alcohol License, which is currently doing business as Beer Shop. The applicant, CPM Liquors Inc., would be proposing to move this location to the Heritage Plaza location where currently Olympia Sports is doing business. Just by way of background from Mr. Patel, he came to this country in 2008. Truly is an American story. He took a job working at a small retail location in Worcester, working 70 to 80 hours per week, actually living above the store. Come 2014, he was able to put enough money away. He purchased his first liquor store in Phillipston, Massachusetts, a store that had been struggling and fallen on hard times, but with a store which was a big part of that community. Mr. Patel, along with the help of his wife, was able to rebuild that store in a very successful location. Since then, he's gone on to purchase another store in Barry, Massachusetts as well. He has, you know, collectively, 10, you know, these two locations, they haven't had a single violation whatsoever. Certainly understand the responsibilities that come along with operating a liquor license. And here, he's given his first ability. The council sees fit to be able to build out a store, you know, from scratch. It's, you know, something that, that he's been doing. As far as the space itself, the store is staying in the same geographical area. So it'll continue, you know, to source the residents in that, that part of town. It doubles the space, which just means more inventory and greater selection for the customer base. Along with that, in doubling the space, you know, they're able to, you know, purchase in larger bulk. They're able to keep the prices down, really a, a store that's having, you know, far expansion of inventory and, and better prices for the community. There is obviously great parking there. And then the convenience for the public with it being, you know, located right with that plaza itself with extreme amount of parking. We believe that it'll allow the, the residents of the town to, to have some, you know, form of one-stop shopping in that regard. So certainly I can't answer any questions that the board may have, Manil and Roma can as well.
Thank you. I think at this point in time, I'd like to ask Jamie, once again, is there anyone in the audience? Now additional information has been furnished that would like to speak?
Nope, there seems to be no one.
Thank you, Jamie. So we'll, we'll continue on with, we'll, we'll close the public section of the meeting and open up for council comments or discussion. So Ralph?
So Mike, one of my concerns, when I initially looked at this at our last meeting, was that, to my knowledge, we hadn't notified any of the Butters. I found out today that that wasn't accurate, that the Butters have been notified. They do have an opportunity, they did, to speak at this meeting, whether positive or negative about it, and give all their thoughts on it. It, it looked to me as the transfer, that that was the one thing missing under the state, that you didn't have to notify a Butters. And that was part of my concern. My concerns disappeared when I realized that all the Butters were notified and that they would have a chance to speak.
That information did come out later today and I, I believe everybody here is aware of that. So that, obviously the Butter issue becomes pretty much a mute point at this point in time. Marilyn?
Hi, good evening, Matthew. I'm sorry, Attorney Porter. I have a question, please, if I may. I was the one who was concerned at the August 11th public hearing regarding the perception of a transfer versus an actual new application. And I raised some questions about the fact that there was nothing that I could see, that we could realize that was actually the same from the original application, but we were dealing with a new business owner, a new business location, a new use and so forth. And that prompted some struggle, not with you folks, but struggle with how East Long Meadow is dealing with these kinds of uses. Even out of the words of our own attorney, that this is a somewhat more complicated than typical transfer. Because it's all in a new place with new people, with a new use, and there's nothing that's the same. Unless you can tell me what's the same. Hold that thought. So in, in going through this process, I did research the ABBCC laws. And there are laws or regulations that govern a transfer versus a new application. And the new application requires, requires a Butter notices. You did a Butter notices, we obviously realized that. However, the Butter notices weren't included within the initial, the original application, the 83 pages that we went through. And so I'm questioning whether there was a reason why they weren't included. You also used the transfer list checklist for a transfer, yet alone the action support a new application. So we're getting mixed messages and just trying to understand moving forward when our town establishes criteria for these kinds of uses coming down the pike. I'd like to understand, one, why was the Butter notice not included in the application? Because our attorney didn't know that and therefore his recommendation was different than it should have been. And why did you use the transfer checklist, which didn't require a Butter notification? When in fact, the checklist for a new application does?
Sure. I'm happy to address the Butter issue. I'm happy to address first. So when we submit the applications to the town, the town at that point puts together an ad for the local newspaper. Once that ad is generated, the ad is then given to us to submit to all of the Butters at that point. So why it's not submitted with the initial application is, the initial application starts the process. The ad may become, say, you know, a week or two, once the town has been able to process that application. And then only then are we given that notice, which is then mailed out to all of the Butters. So once Jeannie asked me today for, you know, evidence of those Butter notifications, generally we will bring those to the, the liquor licensing hearings and give over to the town clerk or town manager. Obviously, you know, we're, we're in a little bit different circumstances with these Zoom meetings. So certainly, if we made any error there, I, I should have, you know, perhaps, you know, mailed those out to Jeannie once they were done. So I, I think, you know, in that regard, perhaps we're all learning through this pandemic. But certainly that's the reason that they were not there, you know, the initial application itself. As, as far as the checklist is concerned, unfortunately, we're really only given the forms that the state provides to us. So this checklist here, technically speaking, this is a transfer of an existing license. Now, I know it's a little bit convoluted because it is moving locations. However, if we were to use a new liquor license application, okay, and use that checklist, the town of East Long Meadow does not have any new licenses available. So it would technically not be a correct transfer of application license. So what the, what the state does allow you to do is, they allow you to put together what's called, you know, almost multi-part applications. So you would see on the first of the, first page of the application itself, where it lists what, what is transpiring within that application. You would see it marked off as transfer of location and then you would see it marked off as change of location. Unfortunately, the cover sheet, it's only one or the other. It can only be transfer a new and technically this isn't a new license. So we would not be able to use that, that checklist itself.
May I, Michael?
Please.
So, so what can, so is it, is it the license that is the transferable piece that, that remains constant? I mean, because we're not dealing with the same business, we're not dealing with the same location. So it's strictly the license?
That's correct. So because from the ABBCC standpoint, really all they're regulating is the license itself. So when they're looking at the application, everything is linked to that, that specific license. That's correct.
Okay. Well, this, this explanation obviously is helpful. It's, it's a little bit, you know, as a, as a community, and you mentioned it as well, you know, we're learning through this process. I've always, as a community, we've always dealt with transfers as either between one, one entity, one individual with another individual, something remained the same at that location. And obviously, that's not happening this time. And the town obviously needs to, under separate cover, discuss the sale of our licenses. Because that's something that we historically don't do either, at least to my knowledge. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, Marilyn. Tom?
Yes. A question regarding the process. It, it appears that all the paperwork is in place now, and it's, it looks like everything's okay. My question is focused on, what's the timeframe of this move and this build-out and the usage of the license?
Sure. So the timeline with, with the ABCC, you know, is unpredictable, obviously. At this point, the, the town, if it was approved, would send it up to the ABC. Depending on who you have there, you know, it's about four to six weeks, you know, a little bit longer at that point. As far as the build-out is concerned with a new location, Olympia Sports' lease is, is up at the beginning of the year, so January 1st. And I will say that the landlord is in, you know, talks with them to perhaps vacate sooner. Or our guys are ready to go, they have their engineer lined up, they have the, the design plan all together. It's just a matter of that space being available. So essentially, if the, if the town were to grant the license itself, you know, go back up to the state and, and then back down, the town then, you know, hold that license, you know, while the work is being finished. Perhaps it locks up properly. But yeah, that, that would be the timeline. So it, it, a little bit of it hinges on, you know, when Olympia Sports is able to vacate that, that location. But otherwise, from there, you're probably looking about, you know, maybe three to four weeks for a build-out.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from anyone else at this point in time? Matt?
Thank you, Mike. The way I look at this is that everybody is right. We're just having a disagreement on process. Now, I'm a huge fan of process, but I believe the process should serve us, not us have to serve the process. So when it comes to some detail of the process standing in the way of doing the right thing, I'm inclined to do the right thing more than the right way. At our last council meeting in August, we hashed out all the issues on this case. My recollection was, we absolutely agreed if the two transactions were uncoupled, we'd approve them. We agreed if we, that we had all the information we needed to approve both the transfer and the relocation. We heard from both Jeannie and the proponents counsel that the ABCC had no concerns about doing the transaction simultaneously. It would seem to be cut and dried, and I believe it should have been approved back then. But several counselors raised these new questions that weren't really related to the issue of combining the two transactions. And this is why we delayed the case and sent it back to our attorney. Our attorney confirmed to the chair of the license subcommittee that doing both transactions was just fine. These other issues, I mean, we, we spent more money asking the attorney for another expanded opinion, which, of course, as you know, came back and said the same thing. I'm not saying these questions aren't important, and they shouldn't be looked into. No, they should. They're valid. They should be looked into. But they aren't really directly related to this particular case. I believe it's time to approve this transaction without incurring further cost and delay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Well, I will just add my comment that this has all been, I, I believe, 90% about process. And this transaction has been different than what we've normally had to deal with. We've, we've tried to follow the correct procedure. Everybody's had input, everybody's had time to have questions answered. And I really think we're ready to entertain a motion, if somebody would like to present a motion.
I'll do that. I move to approve the proposed transfer of license, pledge of license, and change of location from the Beer Shop at 33 Harkness Avenue to CPM Liquors Incorporated, doing business as Heritage Plaza Liquors, 406 to 436 North Main Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded, and obviously, we've had our fair share of discussion. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, I'd like to start with a roll call vote with Kathy.
Yes.
I, Michael Kane, I'm a yes as well. Ralph?
Yes.
None?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you for your time and patience, and we wish you the best of luck going forward.
Lots of you.
Years of prosperity.
Right, welcome to town.
Agreed.
So much.
Thank you.
Under orders of the day, licensing matters. The approval of a name change from Bentley's Bistro in Craft 32 Bistro and Events. Looking for a motion to approve that no, uh, name change.
I move we approve the DBA name change from Bentley's Bistro, 53 North Main Street, to Craft 32 Bistro and Events, contingent upon approval of the special permit amendment.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ralph, please?
Actually, I saw Jeannie. I wasn't sure if she needs to add anything in before I chime in.
Could you hold that thought? And I would, because I believe some new information came in, and I'd appreciate anything you can bring forward, Jeannie.
Right. So this is strictly just a DBA name change. They're not changing much else in their, in their shop. I had talked with Kevin Duquette, the building commissioner, and Bethany Yao, the planning director, about this previously, because they had to submit a brand-new business certificate. Whenever you change your name or location, you have to fill out a business certificate as if it's a new business. So when that comes forward, that needs planning approval, planning department approval, and also building department approval. And Kevin Duquette had said to me that they're gonna need a special permit amendment for this. Upon reviewing the business certificate forms, was the advice of Kevin and Bethany, who had talked to the planning board, who felt that a special permit amendment was not necessary, because it's simply a name change. So the motion would not have to include that verbiage to be contingent upon approval. And let me just add too, that I talked with the ABCC. I couldn't find any application online for just a name change, a DBA name change. So all the ABCs asking from us is a formal vote from the local licensing authority to approve the name change.
Thanks, Jeannie. We're, we're in the discussion phase. Ralph?
So Mike, I, I have some concern with the new name. This is a restaurant, Craft 32 Bistro, I have no issues with. I'm concerned about the and events. As a restaurant, what type of events are they looking to do? Why would they be advertising events at a restaurant? I'm inclined not to, to go along with this. It, it would appear as though they're trying to make a restaurant more than what it is. And without talking to the applicant to, to hear why they chose that specific name and all, I, I'm not for, for approving this because of the and events portion of it.
Don, I, did I see your hand up earlier?
Yeah, you did. About eight, seven, eight years ago, I did represent MS LLC, who, for Bentley's Bistro, simply to assist them with the special permit. So I see no conflict of interest on that. While, while you were asking me, I checked to see who was in the audience, and there was nobody from, from the petitioner there, just two people. And I, I would tend to agree with Ralph. We should maybe table this until we have an opportunity to have people talking before us.
Pat?
Thank you, Mike. Does this name change have any impact on what the business can do? Or are they not restricted by the terms of their license to being a restaurant with an all-alcohol license? In other words, if they were to have an event with entertainment, would they not have to apply for an entertainment license? I imagine that event simply means that you can have a birthday party there. But even if it doesn't, they still have to come, I believe, before the town, before they can have any public event, and they have to apply for an events or a entertainment license. Is that not true?
What I, what I'd like to do before I bring Tom or Marilyn into the equation, Kathy, would you care to comment on that? As Chair of the Licensing Commission?
You're muted. Can't hear you.
You're muted, Kathy.
Well, I'm glad that I, what I just said was muted, but I want, rephrase the question. My attention was drawn to something else, and I didn't hear it. I'm the bad student tonight.
Okay, Ralph is-
Rephrase, repeat the question.
Ralph is concerned over the, the fact that events may, may lead them to be doing something that's not within their, their license as a restaurant. And I'm proposing that I thought that they couldn't do anything other than what's in their license as a restaurant, unless they apply for a special permit for entertainment or something of that nature. So is that not right?
That is correct, but I will have to say honestly, and when I look at that name, that, that same concern is rattling around in my head, because it says Craft 32 Bistro and Events. So it kind of begs the curiosity there, that what is the, the broad vision of the owners?
Birthday parties?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it was, but that isn't, no, I guess that isn't entertainment. But when I hear Craft 32 Bistro, I think more on the lines of the micro brew beers and, and ales and such. And maybe that's not true, and that might be stereotypical on my part. But I, I'd rather doubt that, that, I'd be hard-pressed to think that it would be a stretch to have a birthday party at, well, a birthday party could be for an older person, but under 18, you certainly couldn't do that. Or you shouldn't do it. So, yes, they would have to apply for an entertainment license if they, in fact, were going to have a musician come in or karaoke night, or whatever the situation might be.
Thanks, Kathy. Marilyn and Tom, if you can hold just for one minute. Jeannie, do you have any additional information to?
Yes. They currently hold an annual entertainment license for music. I think everybody knows that they've had music and bands in there, so they haven't, they wouldn't need a one-day entertainment if they've got the annual entertainment license that they had for a few years.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Tom?
Well, that answers part of my question. The other is, do we know that the footprint is gonna stay the same according to the license agreement? My concern is a word event, and does that mean that word event can be carried outside and music can be played?
Kathy, would you want to take a-
Well, I, I'm just kind of mumbling to myself, as that's a good question, which kind of, we're flirting with the, the situation that we probably should be speaking or giving the owners a chance to articulate their, their plans.
Yeah.
I, I would agree. It's only speculation on our behalf without having somebody present. Marilyn?
Thank, thank you, Michael. That did raise a concern for me as well, in terms of the events portion of the name. Simply because, you know, we're dealing with a restaurant, and certainly, families can come in, Patrick, and have a birthday party. That's not the events we're talking about. We could be talking about paired, wine paired dinners, which would be a special event that would, would coincide with a restaurant. So the use, I'm looking at a potential change in the use at that location. If we're talking about wine tastings and having special events where these kinds of things take place, that's sort of a deviation from the, the restaurant use itself. This is information that we need to have, and not necessarily just assume that it's gonna be birthday parties. And I'm disappointed that the planning board didn't bring them to determine whether a modification of the special permit was required, because, because the special permit is for a restaurant. And with alcohol service as an accessory use, not the primary use. And so those are my concerns, and for that reason, I would like to move that we take no action until they come in and talk to us.
Yeah. Michael, if I may too, just add to that, that is, that we do not accept review or documentation unless the presenter is present. That's been our policy right along, so this is another situation, as Marilyn pointed out, that we don't have anybody to ask questions of. So I would agree. We should table this until we have an applicant in front of us, so we can ask questions.
Pat?
I, I would have to take issue with whether a restaurant can have a wine taster. I, I know that almost every restaurant in East Almeado has had a wine taster at one time or another. And if they have an entertainment license, I can't imagine what more we, what more information we need. They have met the requirements for their restaurant, for their liquor, and their entertainment. And we're looking at here a DBA change. Even the state doesn't, ABCC doesn't require anything more. So I hate the idea of tabling everything over and over, because we need more information when there's really, we're not, it's just a name change of a name. So I will be voting in favor of it.
Kathy, did I, go ahead?
You did. I respect what, what Pat is saying, but I wholeheartedly echo what Tom has brought up, that we've made a practice since the inception of this council, that when a petitioner, when a petition comes before the council, the petitioner needs to be present. In this case, it's actually easier to just, you know, log in or, you know, dial in and be present for questions, because we're conjecturing here. I'm conjecturing that Craft 32 might imply micro breweries, not, not, not the brewery itself, but micro brews. And somebody else is saying, well, it could be a birthday party, and maybe it's a beer sampling or a wine tasting. But rather than conjecture, it's more appropriate that the petitioner speak on his or her own behalf. And I would advocate strongly that we stick to that procedure that we've had in the past. Otherwise, you can just mail in and check off the boxes, and we don't have an accurate way of validating or getting our questions answered.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions at this point in time, I would, I would ask for a motion in whatever direction you feel is appropriate.
So through the chair, I think Marilyn already made a motion. She said that she would move to have this continued, so I would second her motion.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was formalized, but it is a formal motion. We do have a second on the floor right now. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll start with a roll call vote with Kathy.
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Hopefully, we can add them to our September 28 agenda to reconcile. Next order of business lies under financial matters pertaining to accepting a gift of a desk for the Recreation Department valued at approximately $400 for months in Savings Bank in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2. How about a motion to accept?
Sure. I would move that we accept the gift of a desk for the-
for the Recreation Department valued at approximately $400 from Munson Savings Bank in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and 1/2.
I'll second the motion.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Thank you both. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Kathy?
Mike?
I'm sorry. Mary?
Could I just add, I want the council to be aware the town has money on deposit with Munson Savings. Before you vote, you should know that. I think that's the reason this item is on your agenda. But it's surplus furniture that the bank has called and offered to us from one of their locations that no longer needs it. So just didn't want you to vote without that knowledge.
Well, thank you. That being said, is there any further discussion based on Mary's comments? And seeing and hearing none, with a roll call vote, Kathy?
Yes.
I will be a yes as well. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And Marilyn?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. We are now still under financial matters and this will be the approval of FY 20 year and interdepartmental transfers. And we have obviously Steve Lonergan here that can make the presentation for us, if you will.
Thank you, Chairman. The, these transfers are for, between interdepartments where a department, for whatever reason, has a deficit. They overspent their budget and another department has a surplus. It's kind of house cleaning and neatens up, makes the presentation look better. Overall, as Mary said, the turnbacks were over 1.5 million. So that's a net figure, that 1.5, and this just makes it easier to read.
Great. So I'll entertain a motion regarding that subject matter.
Move to approve the FY 20 year end interdepartmental transfers as presented for a total of $255,171.39.
I'll second that.
I'm going to, the motion's been made and seconded, which opens up discussion for Ralph.
Steve, just got a couple of quick questions. Interest on long term debt that we had, there's a deficit. And then under category 752, interest on short term, there's a surplus. Did we not know how much we were paying in interest? I can usually calculate out the next three years what I'm going to pay and my charge card sure can. I'm just curious what happened.
Where I'm looking, to be honest, with the long term, the 8,000, I'm looking into that now. Obviously, this was done kind of prior to my arrival. The short term, the surplus was a, from what I've been told, it was set up almost as a reserve fund each year. And I believe this year, we budgeted about 50,000 for the same thing for, I'm going to say bands is what I'm understanding it to be. But that wasn't used.
Okay.
Right.
My credit card does the same thing.
Hearing and seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote as well. And let's start the roll call with Marilyn.
Yes.
You are a yes?
I did, yeah, I said yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. There's a little bit of a time delay here. Some of us here think, some of us don't. I'm going to blame that on my tour here, so. Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
I am a yes as well. And Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you. Steve, you're up again with the preliminary FY 20 year end report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The way I'm going to present this is because the numbers we have right now are very preliminary. We actually have not closed munis, the books on munis yet because we're waiting on the transfer that you just approved. So thank you for that. And so kind of go with the timeline and what I'm looking for, what I'm looking to have accomplished and dates as we need to and fill in with some data as we have it. We're looking now, based on the approval, to be closing munis tomorrow night after close of business so that it doesn't interfere with anybody. And that shouldn't take too long. We've been doing practice runs. I should mention my staff, Olga and Terry and everybody in the finance division has been incredibly helpful. We, Olga and I spent a day running through, in train, running through tests and test scenarios of what might happen and verifying that the numbers are passing over correctly from year to year. I'd also like to thank IT because they refresh train on a regular basis for me and they've always, they've been incredibly supportive of this process. So we're going to close that tomorrow. The outside audit, as Mary says, is scheduled to begin mid-September. It's probably going to be a little, maybe a week later, but in the next week or two, we're going to be starting. IT, once again, is helping out by setting up a remote view only access for our auditors and they will be able to do a lot of their testing without having to come in to the building, which in today's environment is a great advantage. It doesn't, it actually helps speed up the audit versus delaying it by scheduling X blocks, et cetera. They will send some people in for a week or so to review, do some in-person testing. We'll probably set them up where we've always set them up, which is outside Jeannie's office and the Collector Treasurer Clerk's office if we can. If not, we'll find another spot, but we'll get them set up someplace for in-person stuff. This year, the audit, I'm hoping to have, like I said, completed within a couple of weeks and have their main work done by no later than Columbus Day, which will allow them to get a management letter, et cetera, in a reasonable timeframe, hopefully by the end of October, at which point we'll submit Schedule A to the DOR and also start work, get a free cash estimate at that point and then hopefully get certified by mid-November, which is about on track to what I believe was, has been generally the norm here. But as again, going back to the close, the turnbacks, as Mary says, roughly 1.5 million, it represents about 2.5% of the budget. Again, kudos to the department heads and all the people working here in that they've tightened their belts, they've taken furloughs, they've cost cut back on spending. This will help going forward, not only for this year FY 20's budget, but also FY 21 and going forward and how we deal with this pandemic. And that's kind of my year end approach to it also, but layered in. And I know we're going into, within 21, the capital projects and the capital project plan that Counselor O'Connor asked for. We are working on that right now, five year plan. We're trying to update what we have. Part of that includes cleaning out projects that either haven't been completed or have been discarded or just aren't going to happen in general, reviewing and updating the new projects, analyzing our debt and our debt capacity to Ralph's opinion. And they, we're trying to get that in a cleaner, tighter position. Part of, there's a variety of reasons. One of which is we've been offered that potentially we could refund some of our debt, which could save us up to about $150,000 if it works out. So that's something obviously we want to take a look at. But also today's market environment, the rates are really, really cheap, putting it bluntly. They can be as low as 3% on some places, but you know, 3% to 5% is not a bad debt interest rate. And as such, we want to take advantage of it if we can. So I want to first verify that we actually have the capacity, that it makes sense cash flow wise. So I'll be working hand in hand with our treasurer collector and also to make sure that it just makes sense. So we'll be doing that also and verifying that we can do it. The other project I have set up, starting for the year end, is analyzing, creating and updating fiscal policy and procedures. One of the things that we've been talked to about from our outside auditor is the fact that to have them memorialize, rather, you know, have them written down, have them in a place where people can see them. So we're doing that, but while we're doing that, we might as well redo them, see what needs to be added, what can be deleted, what can be updated and just generally cleaned up. As part of this process, I have built in to give regular updates to the council regarding where we stand and what's going on with it.
Well, thank you for both reports. Thank you for all the documentation. It makes our job a little bit easier and obviously much quicker to see what's taking place at this point in time. I can only say with a million and a half in turnbacks, I mean, that could equate to approximately 75 cents on an adjustment on our mill rate, which is positive information, not only for everyone here, but the other 16,000 residents that live in town. So I don't know, does anyone else have any questions for Steve at this point? Tom?
Yeah, my question, I don't know if it's for Mary or Steve, have you gotten any information from the state? Any update as to what the funding will be? I know it's been going up and down in Boston. And right now, I heard that they're going to try to fulfill level funding from last year. But have you heard anything or have we received anything in writing?
I haven't. Last I knew, they were holding fast to their fiscal 20 levels for local aid and Chapter 70. But that information's probably six or seven weeks old. Steve?
Yeah, I've heard the same thing. I know the budgetary, my old contacts in the treasure world, the budgetary process is, I think they're talking October, November anyways, before they'll have that even in discussion. My guess will be, and this is purely my opinion, that the election will interfere with that somewhere.
All right. Thank you again. There is no old business under new business designation of early in-person voting location for November 3, 2020 state election. Jeannie, do you have any additional information on that for us?
Sure. Speaking of elections, as I reported earlier, early voting for the presidential election on November 3 or October 17 to October 30, going through two weekends in two weeks. And very happy to have Birchland Park Middle School available to us again. I've said this before, but the principal and the custodians are just, go above and beyond, are very helpful, enthusiastic and never complain. So we're happy to have that location. It has to be formally approved and designated by the council so we can report that to the state. And just for your information, the hours are going to be the same that we did for the October or August. Would be Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. We have to have it open for early in-person voting, the same as our business hours. And then the weekends, we have to do four hours, minimum of four hours, and we do 10 to 2 and that worked out pretty well. So we'd like to stick with those hours, but I still need the formal designation from the council for the location. Please.
All right, thank you. Could I please have a motion to accept the designation of the location?
I move to designate the location for early in-person voting for the November 3, 2020 state election from October 17, 2020 to October 30, 2020 to be Birchland Park Middle School.
I second that.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that particular motion? Hearing and seeing none, we'll start with a roll call vote with Marilyn.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. Okay, designation. Okay, our last order of business under new business is a status discussion of reopening plans for the town hall. So Mary, could you just give us a little bit of update? I know we had, it was an email sent out, I don't know, let's just say three, four weeks.
It was 20th. It was August 20th.
There you go.
August 20th.
So is there any update, any newer information regarding anything from the governor or what you're seeing from day to day operation on what our future plans are looking like?
No, there's no new information. Governor's most recent occupancy guidance and so forth was, I think, August 7. And municipal legislative bodies are exempted from those requirements. However, keeping mindful of all the other town departments that have to have a role in your meetings and the general opening of town hall, I'm not inclined to consider it yet. In fact, to be totally candid, I don't think we'll be realistically close to opening the building until the first of the year, if then. And to have in-person meetings, I was, I did receive a request from the Historical Commission. They want to have an in-person meeting and I said, go ahead because they're, I think, a three or a five person commission. No one goes to their meetings and they're going to meet outside. So in certain circumstances, it might work if you have a small committee. I know the planning board met outside of the high school a couple of times this summer for short term meetings, but they're standing six feet apart and they're being filmed. All things considered, from the management of the town's departments and facilities, real estate, safety and health of our employees, the technological difficulties, the packed schedule for boards and commissions which meet, that have to be covered and broadcast, it's not feasible and I don't think it's prudent at this point to push the envelope. We can't become too complacent about the power of this virus and I don't mean to be Nancy negative, but I feel a distinct obligation to protect the well-being of our town employees and guard our resources and I take that very seriously. So those are my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments at this point in time? Pat?
Thanks, Mike, for putting us on the agenda. You know, back in March, when Governor Baker shut down the state, I wrote him a letter in which I warned him that closing the state was going to be easy, but reopening it would be very, very difficult. Who would dare make the decision and what would the criteria be? And how would the public respond? We're seeing my warning come to pass. The media has so frightened people that everyone wants to be totally safe from COVID. Now, I agree COVID's a serious issue, but no one cares much about our being safe from the other dire consequences of shutdown, which doctors, psychiatrists, substance abuse counselors, DYSs, social workers, unemployment counselors tell us are growing more and more serious as the months tick by. And no one worries about the reductions in service that shutdowns inevitably entail. No, it's all COVID and only COVID all the time. It's all about being safe, which of course is never going to be possible. Every, even a year after a vaccine becomes available, we will never be totally safe from COVID. We have to determine the level of safety that we can accept. So one would think that if a community's major hospital had fewer than two dozen cases for two solid months and fewer than three ICU patients and that community was white on the governor's threat chart and the governor was allowing offices to reopen, that that community might be among the first to do so, but we're not yet ready. We aren't ready to have live council meetings. So the obvious question is, when will we be comfortable with doing these things? And is staying closed really having almost no impact on our ability to provide resident services? Could we stay closed for a year or more? Could town hall be totally online going forward? These are the questions and the criteria that I would be looking for. So I thank you, Mike, for opening the dialogue on this issue.
Thank you. Part of it is, Mary did an excellent job a little ways back. You just defined the date a few minutes ago here with an email explaining what had taken place. So we all generally know because we're involved pretty much day to day, but you know, residents have questions and I felt that this would be a unique opportunity to, in terms of transparency, to be able to have a brief discussion on this, see what Mary's plans are, what she's hearing. She's certainly hearing much more than we do from a day to day basis. And that way, the public can chime in if they're not watching a media meeting, they can watch it later, the taped version of it. And now they have a general idea that, you know, let's say September, October, November. I mean, you know, possibly, you know, maybe three months from now, new information will become available at that point in time. If Mary hears anything new or we do, then we can open it up for discussion again. That being said, does anyone else have any questions on this subject matter or any other comments about- comments they'd like to make? Marilyn?
Just, yes, thank you, Mary. I, I'm not in a rush to push things as far as our meetings are concerned. It's, it's, would be labor-intensive to try to socially distance all of us with all of our cabling, to make sure we had correct audio. And then how do we limit the number of folks that want to visit our meetings? It's, would not be easy to do. So I appreciate the fact that we had a chance to talk about this. My question is, with respect to providing service to our community, I've been at the town hall enough, I see the tables outside, I know that people call, and our town employees go out and sit with residents and they fill out forms. Are we meeting the needs of our residents within the normal day-to-day town hall business?
I have no reason to believe we're not.
Okay.
Meeting those needs 100%.
Then I think it's, that's a good piece to know. So it's important that we're doing our jobs, we're just doing them differently. And time will tell as to how long we do it this way. Thank you.
All right. Ralph?
So there's a lot of different thought processes going through my mind with the COVID, with opening. I'm going to start with the hearing from the residents of the town that they're aggravated that, one, they can't go to town and pay their taxes. Second is the fact that if they pay them online, they're being charged a convenience fee. They're not happy with the convenience fee, considering that they can't go to town hall and pay them like they normally do. I went on to our website and I noticed, I would understand a charge card if you use one a fee for that, but in one of the sections, it says if you pay by check, there's a 250 fee for it. I don't know if that's just a misprint on there, if we're actually charging them to pay by check and send it in. I think this is something that we should look at. I mean, if the town hall's not going to be open for another three, four, or five months, I know people that haven't paid their taxes, and they said they're not going to until town hall opens and they'll go in and pay them. I think it's something to think about, look at. I can understand our meetings being by Zoom. I don't have any issues with that. I would just like to know that going forwards, as we can open, how are we going to open? Is it going to be for the residents only and keep the meetings in Zoom for the time being? And to try and set up a whole plan going forwards.
So I am trying to set up a plan, Ralph. I think about it pretty much every single day, and I have not received one phone call since March 16 in my office directed to me of any resident of the town of East Long Meadow complaining that they can't get into town hall to pay their bills. There's boxes outside the front door for deposit of checks. There's no fee involved with that. In fact, the other day, I assisted somebody who I met in the parking lot who wanted to go in the building to apply for a building permit, and I went back in and ran upstairs, and the building department came down and assisted the person at the picnic table outside. So it's not a matter that we're ignorant of or neglectful of or unmindful of. We think about it every day, but we continue to be on 50% capacity of our work staff. People are rotating their schedules. They're working, for example, Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, because we're limited to 50% capacity within a municipal building. So to, and if we do open it, whether it's in January or whether it's in next week, it will be by appointment only. That's what Springfield did in their city hall. And now we're effectively doing that already, because anybody, and I hope whoever's watching this meeting, if you have an issue, call the town manager's office. I sit there pretty much every day, all day, waiting to hear from you. So, and when I do hear from people, I respond to their inquiries or refer them to the appropriate department head. But I, for one, am not fearful, and I don't revolve my life around COVID. However, I, as I said a few minutes ago, I do take my responsibilities to protect the health and safety and welfare of the town employees very seriously, because if somebody comes into the, to the town hall and is ill and infects a coworker by chance, and we don't know if these things happen, but we've had many people go out on the Federal Cares Act. So we lose 80 hours a week for somebody who's got the COVID, who has perhaps infected someone else in their department, which means then you have to quarantine for 14 days, and you could lose, we have small departments. We have departments that have two and three people working in them. So if somebody comes in there and has that infection, potentially infects somebody else, then you can lose the services of an entire department for two weeks. And I personally don't think that that's prudent for the town of East Long Meadow, at least under my tenure. And I also think that those are decisions that we evaluate every single day. And I'm sorry to be redundant, Ralph, but it's heavy on my mind, because, you know, if I thought for one millisecond that the townspeople were not being serviced, I would do something about it. But I've seen Jeannie and Mary O'Connor and Jackie Sullivan and the building commissioner and the treasurer and the assessor, I've seen all these people in the parking lot, helping people, myself included, DPW, Tom Christiansen, Bruce Finney. The service is there, and people do it with a smile. And I think you, as a council, could be very proud of the service you're getting from your department heads, because they're all working extremely hard to make sure that the management of this crisis does not have a negative impact on the townspeople.
Okay, Don?
I have to echo Mary's thoughts from my business as a real estate attorney. I just applaud the hard work that the, that, you know, the collector's office is doing, producing MLCs and processing payments and the clerk's office. I've seen it all firsthand and how wonderful job they did. And in my other business, I can tell you, I've seen the dire effects of forced shutdowns, but I also have seen the dire effects of states in the United States who aren't taking COVID seriously and seeing the rebounds where American citizens, because of them, cannot go to Canada, cannot go to the Bahamas, cannot go to many, many, many places on account of it. So I think the risk of opening up too soon and possibly having one COVID incidence of a new citizen moving to town, another business person coming into town hall and, and, you know, transmitting COVID for whatever reason, is far greater than keeping the path that we're taking right now and having the safety of the townspeople. Because seriously, if we are having issues, Mary would be the first to know, and we would all be the first to know, second to know, if they feel there's a diminution of service. Yes, service is never going to be 100% with the setup that it's having, but the yeoman work of the people, the town of East Long Meadow, and I forgot to mention, you know, the people in the fire department going out with getting the smoke detector certificates and so forth. And that's just the experiences I'm dealing with them in my law practice. I mean, bravo. I mean, I just have to give kudos to the hard work of the, of these, of the people of East Long Meadow who are working behind the scenes and on the scene, helping out businesses and the constituents.
Thanks, Don. Pat?
No one can take away the, from, from our town, the heroic actions of our staff. I mean, everything that Mary describes, we've seen and we applaud, but it certainly is not as efficient as it would be. And it's hard to say that we don't suffer a diminution in services when we have somebody get in their car and drive out to a constituent's house in order to help them fill out a form. Lotable, but it's not nothing. And so I, again, I, it's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to appear not to be negative, but it's, it's like, it's very positive what they're doing within the confines, but the confines are restrictive. And I just add one more item. I'm in a book club, and we have nine members. Our average age is over 80. And we're all meeting together in a very large room, six feet, six feet apart, because we're done with this, this, you know, we're, we're just, we know that there, it's not with us. And so we are willing to take a chance. And I note that no one on this council has been, has disappeared. So again, my concern is strictly, it appears to me that we will not be opening within a year, because nothing will change from what Mary has, and I'm sure Amy and Paul and everybody has proposed, nothing will change with regard to the risk of COVID. It's going to be there. So we need to be ready to look at a permanent, a permanent operation from, over, over, over electronics. And that, I'm afraid, is where we are if we continue this, this road.
Thank you. Our next order of business is action items for our next meeting. I think it's fair to say we will, we can plan on a September 22 meeting. Reason being, the, probably the first reading of our 3:30 Chestnut Street project would, would depict a meeting on the 22nd, and I imagine the name change for the restaurant would be on that agenda. I don't know if anyone else would like to bring forward any other action item, action items at this point in time. Okay. Tom?
Mike, just a quick note. This mixed-use district proposal that will be coming forward, I think it's important that the council have separate meeting on that before we hold a public hearing on it, and then have the public hearing to get their input, because I certainly have a number of questions, and I don't have the answers.
I would ask, Don, are there, are there any other meetings scheduled for your board at this point in time?
No. I talked to, to Jeannie, and what I asked was that our modification proposal that came out of our Planning Matters Subcommittee, at least out of deference, go back to the planning board. And that was supposed to be in tonight's meeting, but I understand through a constituent who's been, apparently that tonight's planning board meeting had some technical issues and so forth. So I don't, and I guess they're working on rescheduling or having an emergency meeting or some other quick meeting on this coming Monday. So I don't know if they were able to chime in. I, I can see through the Facebook page that they did at least start the meeting. I just know that it ended sooner than expected, and I believe it was due to some technical issues. So, I mean, just to recap for the audience, this original proposal came at, through the planning board and went to the council. The council then sent it back to our Subcommittee. And we spent about a year or so working on making changes, in our humble opinion, making it better. We changed the name, we changed a number of other things, in my opinion, somewhat substantive. So to have it go from our, the Subcommittee directly to the council would somewhat be an affront to the process as if this came directly from the planning board. So the planning board, I believe, was supposed to review it tonight, even if it was tacitly just to say, yeah, we approve what you guys did to our original proposal, go forward with it or not. And I don't, I have no clue whether that made the cut tonight or not. So I would, hopefully, they'll have a meeting on Monday, and hopefully we can get some comment, and then hopefully we can have, we can address that comment. Whether you want to have a special meeting just on that subject, that'd be great. I just would love, and I say that'd be great, with the understanding that, that this is getting some type of, of interest in the public. And sadly, I'm not hearing anything, and I'm a little disappointed. So I'm hoping we can find some ways to get this message out. So some, a project of this magnitude, but more specifically, a zone, a zone bylaw of this, I mean, a bylaw of this magnitude can get some type of public input as we're going forward, as opposed to making comment in, in the rearview mirror.
Okay. Jeannie, I believe you might have some additional information?
Yeah, so a week or two back, I put something on the homepage for public input about the zoning, creation of the zoning law, and gave a link to the draft that you all received in the meeting a few weeks ago. So that's on the web, the website, and it's on the Facebook page too for the town. I just want to mention that. But also, procedurally, I think, you know, at this point, you're supposed to have the public hearing, and I would think that's where you ask your questions. I don't think it's, I don't think it's correct to have a special meeting and then hold a public hearing. I think that's probably going to hold things up more, but that's just my opinion, right off the top of that.
Not overload, just through the chair, just not overload the meeting and have enough time. But, but again, my concern is, we may have, what we've experienced in the Subcommittee and so forth, is a lack of interest. So is there a way Ryan, Jeannie, through the chair, can tell us how many hits or clicks we've been getting on the page, how many, how many unique views that we were, that people are looking at this?
I can ask them.
All right, please, please.
And.
Mary?
Don, Mike, this is a response to Don Anderson's comments. It may be miscommunication, but I did check with Bethany Yao after the last meeting, counselor, to determine if the, the final presentation from your Subcommittee had to go back to planning, and she was not of the opinion that it was going to be on their agenda for any further action. But I'll double-check that tomorrow in light of what you just said, because that notion that they were going to discuss it further is news to me.
Yeah, through the chair, Mike. Remember, this is not a plant, this is not, this is a planning board proposal. We, every member will agree, we've made some substantive changes, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's a, the name change and, and certain dimensional height requirements, we made changes. Because it came from the planning board as a courtesy, whether it's a requirement, they should have at least the opportunity to chime in prior to our public hearing. As I said, if it wasn't coming from the planning board in the first place, I really don't think that's necessary. I just think this is just a good, solid practice of, you know, if we're modifying someone's recipe and they're coming back and we're calling it something coming from the planning board, we're not the planning board, we're the Planning Matters Subcommittee. And I think out of fairness, they should have some chance to go, or whatever, at least pass it through. They can choose not to address it, but I believe it should be on the agenda, at least for, for comment due to the substantive changes we made.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. That, that will, well, we have Ralph.
Just chime in real quick here, being on the Subcommittee. So I wasn't on the Town Council when this started, but a developer brought a, a thought process, I'm going to say, to the Town Council as far as for a mixed-use development. And the council thought that, hey, this may be a good idea, and sent it to the planning board to have them look at it, and if they thought it was something worthwhile, to create a mixed-use district bylaw, which they did, sent it to the council. Us being a Subcommittee of the council, we looked at it, we're only making recommendations back to the council. That's what our job is. As far as the planning board goes, I spoke to Mr. Punderson. He received through an email the entire mixed-use village bylaw, and he said it was his understanding that everyone on the planning board has received it to start their reviews. And I believe they are planning to chime in at our meeting and tell us, hey, we like this, we don't like that, or ask questions on it. I think that's why we start with a first reading of it, then we go on to that. And, I mean, this may take three or four meetings to get through everything. This bylaw is pretty intensive. I think we did a great job on the Subcommittee. Kudos to everyone. We put in a lot of hard work on it, and I'm interested to hear what other people think, including town residents. Thank you.
Thanks. So that being said, we, we can count on a meeting at this point in time on the 22nd at 6:00 PM. That's probably where this first reading will take place, and it's a starting place, it's not the end, and we have to start somewhere. That being said, no other action items to discuss this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. I'm sure there's no discussion on this one. So, we're all callless with Kathy?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ralph?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Pat?
Sure.
Tom?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Thank you all. We're adjourned at 8:11, and we'll see y'all soon. Thank you.